Okay, it's 7:04 September 11th. And we're having an emergency select board meeting. Item one is to open the meeting. Select persons present: Chair Jeff Peters, Josh Tracy, and Mike Gould. Town employees present: Michelle Nichols, Matt Blockler. No public present. Let's start with a pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Okay, item two is open session. Nobody present, we'll skip that. Item three, signing the minutes of the board meetings for 8:07, 8:14, 8:21, 8:28, and 9:04.
Yes, so I'm assuming that she sent them all to you?
She did. I've read every one.
So I will try to paper these together.
She did a really nice job of that.
She really does. And it's not easy what she does either.
No, it's not. It's nice the way she emails and I can sit down on them all and read them all and have my coffee. When I can actually digest it.
And then the special town meeting, she sent that along, although you guys don't actually sign this. This is just, she sends them out to you just as FYI.
The minutes should stay on file with the others. Okay, moving on. Item four is review of the treasurer's warrants. We have payroll number 60 and number 114.
Right, you won't have your AP warrants until next week.
Okay. Yeah, that's right, this is off meeting.
Right, this is an off thing, but these are the payroll that we've had so far.
That's weird, why is this one on here?
Which one is it?
Patrick Lewis.
Why have you got Patrick Lewis?
Not sure.
Where did that come from? Alright, hold on. Let me back track. We were doing something with getting stuff to send down to the auditors. She didn't notice this either. Scratch the 114. I don't like, this is the pack of stuff that she was emailing to the auditor's office.
Okay.
They sent new stuff for us to do. They're doing that pretty much daily.
So we're doing just payroll of number 60?
Yep. Sorry, I did not realize that.
Okay, moving on. Item six, old business. Eagle update. And that would be you, Michelle.
Alright, so they have sent James, who is out of the Bangor office.
Roanoke Island, he corrected me.
Oh, Roanoke, okay. He has a lot of stuff set up. He's been working from home, actually trying to get my computer station, everything it needs. I'm not sure when he'll be back in the office to do some more work. But he's working on the things that we have wrong or that need to be updated. And he's compiling a list. So we haven't got that list yet, but...
Okay.
The biggest hurdle right now is the fact that our domain name to the website, we don't have access to. And without that access, we can't set up emails and we can't do anything else. I have not heard from the lady since. I have emailed her, I have called her, and I've got no reaction. Eagle has also stepped in. We have a couple people, Caleb, I can't remember the other gentleman's name, that has stepped in to try and email her, see if we can move this on and get this taken care of. The one interaction I had with her, she sent us a bill. We paid it last December. We paid her 430 something dollars. And she sent us another bill when I asked for the domain name.
And we are not due to pay until December?
Right.
So she's provided nine months of service?
Roughly, yep. And I'm not real sure what service. She has no contract. I have contacted MMA Legal, they have not got back to me. I checked my email before we came tonight. I have no email back from the lady herself as of today.
Because she answered us once and just shut down.
Yep, yep, that's exactly.
So... Where do we go from here with...
I honestly don't know. If she won't meet with us, I asked her if we could, you know, get together. We sign her check and we either come up with a contract, an official contract for her services, or we pack these. And I have no reaction.
So what do you think we should do?
I didn't realize how important it is to have that name.
The ownership of that name.
The ownership of that name, of our whole website, everything. It all was into security issues.
The ownership is only like 15 dollars a year or something, isn't it?
She's charging us about 62 to 70 dollars for licensing that domain name.
But that's what...
That we don't know.
That we don't, evidently. She won't give it to us. And the thing is, she doesn't do anything for the website. She doesn't set up the pages. Sam does that. She, Sam puts up the minutes, the posters if we have fundraisers. Sam does all of that.
What's the 400 dollars for?
She says it's maintenance. The bill says maintenance for the website.
So she calls the Go Daddy for 15 something dollars?
We don't even, we don't even Go Daddy.
So how do we, how do we move this along? How do we move our position along so that we can get what we need from her?
I have no idea because she literally is holding everything up when it comes to our computer systems.
You have legal...
So do we contact an attorney? You've contacted MMA already for free legal advice?
Yeah, I haven't heard from them yet. Maybe have our lawyer draft her a letter?
Is it appropriate to visit her?
I don't know.
My opinion, no. I mean, we have, we have safeties installed in our procedures here. So I think we need to wait and see what legal says to do. And if it's a letter, then it's a letter, but...
Is this keeping us from using our new computers?
Yes, it is.
So it's holding up?
It's holding up everything right now.
So we're being held hostage at this point?
I guess I'm not sure. I guess my question is why? I mean, why is she holding us up?
I don't know, because we gladly write our check.
You communicated with her that we was happy to meet.
And she did fire back. I mean, at least she's acknowledging...
She acknowledged me once, yep.
So it's not that if she's, we're...
Can you see in your email if she got those emails, the last ones after that?
No, I don't think I can.
I know there's some sort of way to make it so that if they open it, you can see it.
I've called, I've left messages on her phone. Eagle was actually able to find a phone number. The bill that is given to us has no phone number, has no email address. It's a basic blank.
In case anybody's wondering, as we move forward, that's not acceptable. That's, to me, I find that absolutely ridiculous. If she's providing a service that we're paying her for, she needs to provide us, so she needs to talk to us.
Right, yeah, absolutely.
That's why legal needs to be involved.
Okay, and you said that Eagle is in this process too, trying to...
We have been in contact with Eagle. Caleb knows what's going on. The board is fully aware. Any emails that come out or go in, you're all covered too.
So is there any motion needed on this?
Not really. I guess it's more just an update. This is where we stand. We're waiting for MMA Legal to come back with an opinion on what we need to do. If we need to go to the lawyer...
Then we'll need to...
Then we'll need to have a motion to go further, if that's what you want to do.
Well, can we make that motion now, ahead of time?
I don't think so. I think we need to just see what happens.
Yeah.
Through MMA first.
What's really frustrating is we've waited all this time to have these brand-new computers that are sitting on the floor.
Using computers that don't work.
Installed. In fact, Sammy's computer today, she was showing me stuff on our computer and we had to wait. I mean, it's so slow. And we now have a system, we've got the budget, we can get these involved. You know, these computers up and going, and we can't because we can't get the rest of the pieces together.
The other thing that I found encouraging about this Eagle update is, is talking to him in the office, the computers that Duval Tech donated to us. He said they were at the top of their game, so that's good. I was excited to hear that. It was a good gift.
Yeah, it was very well. And we've got, the town manager has his two screens up. Mine are gonna be a little bit different because I don't want to lose my big screen, so we're gonna put two singles on my desk. And then there'll be another set of doubles that will go on the deputy town clerk's desk.
Okay, so that's pretty much just an update.
Yep, that's...
Again, thank you Dale for making that happen. We appreciate it. Item C, extending advertisement for deputy town clerk position.
Yes, so we have two applications at this point. Friday the 13th is our deadline today. For the deputy town clerk position. I don't know if it's just not out there enough. I don't know if the people just aren't seeing the ad.
So you're thinking another week?
I'm thinking, at least. We've got it on the website, we've got it on the Facebook page. Any other ideas?
I'd like to pull together, kind of like the town manager thing, where we bring all of them together at the same time. In a way, we've only, only had it out for a short time. I'd like to do them all at once, like we did with this. So how far do we want to extend it?
Two weeks?
You want to go two weeks? It's, to run it in the newspaper, it's 212 dollars per week to run the ad.
Which paper are we in, the Gazette?
The Gazette, yeah.
The only thing I'm afraid of is a week just ain't, I don't know.
How long ago before? Was it two weeks before?
Two weeks.
Two weeks. So somebody needs to make a motion. What do you think we ought to do?
I make a motion and we extend it two weeks.
And advertise it in the paper?
Yeah.
Just like we're doing. Extend it two weeks.
Okay.
We got a second vote. We're extending it two weeks.
Alright.
Okay, moving on. Item seven.
Oh, no, we skipped one, with the website host.
Oh, we missed that.
We did. So Mike and I were able to see, it's actually called Town Cloud. You have copies in your packets. They walked us through the process of changing things, adding things. I can actually build your agenda within the website. And then I can publish it. Once I publish it, it just pops out for everybody. I can email you from the website and send them so that you can say, yeah, we missed this one, or you can add stuff. I was very impressed. And then this afternoon, Sam showed me what she has to go through to get our website stuff up and going. It's awful. It's, we sat there 45 minutes just making the files and posting it to YouTube, and then you move it from YouTube to something else, and it's very cumbersome.
So this Town Cloud, Cloud Service, does this come, is this a separate company? Does it come through Eagle?
It's a separate company.
Separate company.
Yep. And the quote that's there is, they quoted us 4,400 dollars for a three-year contract.
That's about 1,200 dollars a year, something like that?
Yep, roughly. And Mike might have more to add to...
You saw the...
And again, they're willing to set up help assist in many different ways. One thing we didn't know is, we don't know if, actually, once we get this, is that website available?
That's, that's the question I need to ask them.
Yep, that's a question to ask. The other question to ask is, is this or is similar to a program available through Eagle, the IT people that we already have?
But I don't think...
No, Eagle doesn't, no, Eagle suggested this group.
They did, okay.
They recommended them.
And they even told us that they worked very well with Caleb in building this.
And this is designed just for municipal use? Alright, so we'll answer that.
They showed us other examples of, I'm trying to think of towns now.
There was Denham, they just finished.
That suburb. Some bigger ones actually, more so than ours. We're fairly small, these are bigger, bigger towns. But again, I'm not a software guy, but I guess I was pretty impressed with what they offered, how easy it was, and the time savings it would do for, you know, our existing website, narratively. So yes, I was pretty impressed with it. Now, given, but my question was now, do we own it?
That's, that's, yeah, we did, I need to find that out.
So why don't we answer that question and then bring it to the next meeting?
Yep. And they also, there's a section in there, you can buy additional pieces, I guess. So there's one section they call 311, and it's actually set up for complaints. So they can, people from their computer or wherever they are can log a complaint in and it will come to us.
Really? That's cool.
So that they don't have to call the office, they can make it something.
And then when that complaint filed with a concern, concern, complaint, whatever you want to call them, but we get rid of that.
And this has got, this has got, whatever you call it, firewalls or whatever, so that it's not...
Except she works directly with Caleb.
Yep.
Right, so it falls under our other system.
So like, one of the things that you can do with the agendas is you can have an agenda, and if you have minutes from your prior meeting that you're gonna be signing tonight, we can add that right in so that it's part of the file. And people can open up the agenda and see everything you're gonna be doing. You, if the warrants, the payroll and all that stuff, we can actually, and they showed a section that looks just like your warrants, that can also be imported. And so people will see what bills are being paid tonight and being signed off. I mean, it's a whole packet, and all they have to do is click a button and it opens up for them.
It sounds like a nice reference for us to eliminate some paper too.
Yes.
In most, in most cases, they've actually, just say your website's 50 pages long, you know, in your different categories, they actually can reduce it to like 20 pages. So they've compacted.
But that, in my opinion, that would eliminate a lot of the stuff that we're doing.
It would.
It'd be quicker.
And, and the other thing that's really neat is, if you open the file on your phone, it will automatically adjust. So you're not scrolling back and forth trying to find things. It will adjust to your phone size.
No kidding?
Yeah.
So this ends up being like 1,260 dollars a year, is the commitment, is a three-year, a three-year commitment to sign up to do it?
And they will waive, if you sign up for the three-year commitment, they will waive the initial 350 dollar fee to get started.
Hmm, that sounds pretty good.
I was very impressed on how easy it is.
And it was suggested by our new IT company.
Yep, and they recommended them.
Actually, weren't you working on a grant or something that would pay Carson for this?
Yes, hopefully tomorrow I'll finish. Now I have the quote from them. They can finish the grant up for the MMA Safety, I can't remember what the, Safety something, but... And I can submit that to MMA tomorrow.
Is that the risk?
Risk management, yep.
Cool. So, we'll have an update next week.
You will.
Awesome. Okay, moving on to item seven, new business. The only item I had, I talked to Jamie Robinson today about locking in our heat and oil for the season in a municipal rate of $2.59 for number two. It locks it for the whole season. And we just need to decide if that's what we want to do, and if we do, I just need to contact him and he'll put it in our file. And that's what we'll be charged for the year. For heat and oil for our municipal buildings.
Basically in this place?
Including this place?
A little bit of a town garage.
Town garage.
Yeah, town garage, and then Chris just reimburses us whatever the bill, I send the bill to him and he reimburses us.
And that, that would be locked in, you know, not knowing what's gonna happen in November and where things are gonna go. I, I kind of feel like, I don't remember seeing it much cheaper than that for a long, long time. I kind of, I think it would be...
I made some phone calls this afternoon after you said that, and lock it in.
So I make a motion that we contact Robinsons and lock our heat and oil in at 2:59 for number two for the season.
Second.
Vote. It's a vote. Okay.
Okay, so under new business, while you're still right there, I had forgotten to put on Andrew Skokkenbank. John Seco and Angie stopped by the office this week, just checking in, wanting to know when they should come and meet with the board. We've been dragging our feet with this because we wanted to get a new town manager on board before we do all the signing of all the cards first. But when do you want to set something up? Do you want to aim for sometime in October? So you can get everybody under your belt?
My personal feeling is I think that when we make this move, the new town manager needs to be part of it.
Okay.
However that looks in the schedule.
Okay, I will just reach out to them and let them know what the timeframe is.
That's what's happening. Okay, item eight, we don't have a town manager, so clerks report, and I think we've pretty much got most of it.
You have. The only thing I have a question there is, our days, our nights are getting colder. And we had talked about the pods and the town records. I know how cold it is in that building come November, December. I don't know if that's something we want to push up sooner, get more information.
So U-Haul also has those.
U-Haul those, okay.
Yep, there's one called Pods, and U-Haul has the same service.
Okay.
So we may want to just start doing some homework on that. U-Haul's quite local to us, it might be the easy way to do it.
Yeah, I think I went down 15 and there was a house that had all these little square blocks. Is that what they are?
That's what they are, right there.
And what do you do, come up and just drop one here?
Whatever you want, they drop it here, and when you're ready to move it, they move it, or you can move it. But I think that's, that simplifies it for us. We load the stuff in it and we take it where it goes. It's in heated storage and it's logged.
Okay, so you want me to go ahead and start hunting around and find out what the prices are? Okay.
Pods was one brand, U-Haul's a brand, just to see who offers them and what they cost.
Okay. That's it for me.
Okay, and moving on. Item nine, road commissioner's report. I'm starting with you, Josh. What's the big news for the week?
Ah, I don't really...
On our infrastructure?
I don't really have anywhere, kind of. Scott's doing another job this week, so he isn't gonna get started on the few other little projects we had left till next week and...
Did we get the signs put up that, are all the signs put up that we bought?
No, we're waiting for some posts for the roads, not posts, but the caps. Michelle ordered those, and one sign didn't show up, so, and he will kind of want to do it all together, just do it. I'm also having him replace the stop sign. We have stop signs on the end of Honeywell. We hadn't discussed that before, but that sign is virtually, it's like looking at that, you know, so...
Then we have the signs already?
We have the sign, it's just, it's just swing by, take the bolts out, change it, just 10, 15 minutes, you know. I had something else. Oh. Beaver Guy will be here Monday to start on, when I have two issues on the mail, they moved up to the next one too. So, and then...
What's the name of Beaver Guy?
And that nice?
Yeah, same one.
Yep. I did do some research on that. We don't have to use that USDA either. There are guys out there that will do it. We actually have one here in town who had a disagreement with the last board, and I keep meaning to stop and talk to him and see what his cost would be.
Except for his sake money.
Right. And I talked to, I can't remember his name. Oh, let's see. I think I'll find it now. John Van Alistine. He's the main DOT crew supervisor out of Bangor. He covers Charleston, Guilford. So they already have an engineer involved in this down here on...
The redo speed flashy light?
No, for the drainage.
The drainage, okay.
Yeah. He says as of right now, it looks like three years old. So...
And was he the same guy on the flashing speed sign thing, or is it a different guy? The same road, same...
He probably could have been. I didn't discuss that part of it with him. But he says that there is a problem with the drainage. It's just that...
So what Chris is telling us is right.
Well, I mean, if anytime it rained, you'd go by that house over there.
Yep.
And there's a pool right on the road. Don't think, if whoever's car is parked there, it should be...
So the other, the thing that I don't, and he didn't know for sure, is that leaf catch that Chris was talking about is actually a slot underneath the curb for the leaves to go into, so that they run right by the, so they don't get pushed out and then cover over the top of the...
The drain.
So you have to clean out the leaf catch once a while. I don't know how we'd go about putting one on the uphill side. And I don't know if we put in that leaf catch, or if the state put in that leaf catch, and he wasn't sure either. It is under our sidewalk, so that's kind of a, I don't know, I'm, I'm... There's some other options, I think, down there. I think, I mean, if we gotta wait three years, I... Should we do something? Maybe. Yes, I, I don't know. That's, it's a... It's a hard situation.
Right.
And then I see you have like Peter's Road Striping.
Yep, I've actually had two people come to me on that.
Did you ride out there?
Striping or stripping?
Striping.
Striping.
I didn't type it.
Well, when someone says something that was, talk about the ditch and whatever, I think, and I said, they be striping, they got stripped in that road. You know what I mean? I just think you strip, take the tar off and go in the dirt. For some reason, I think, what's the advantage there, you know?
That's the one road in town that got ground and repaved that is held up extremely well.
Extremely well.
Especially for a town, a road that has no shoulders. The edges aren't breaking up, nothing.
Has it ever been striped?
Yes, it's striped now. And it's, honestly, other than the yellow line down center, the white line is in good shape.
Yeah.
I don't, and, and to me, the yellow, there's a few spots that are a little iffy, but it's not that bad, I don't, I don't think.
Two different people approached me about that this week.
Geez.
Geez.
Then I know that noise.
So the striping goes, it is currently striped right to our town line, correct?
Yeah, right to the Parkman town line, yes. Yep, I rode that way when I came here. Yep, I rode that way, uh, when I came here.
Okay, no action required.
Looks good.
Right.
Okay, any other select board concerns? I make a motion, we adjourn.
Second.
We adjourn.